Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven reign. Reign with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let us march on till victory is won. Sing a song full of the faith that the darkness has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. They sing the rising sun of our new day beyond. Let us march on till victory is won. You may be seen.
Peace and blessings and justice be upon you. What a beautiful audience. Praise God, what a beautiful audience, what a special occasion. We're very honored to be with all of you here, to see this ensemble here on this very special occasion, commemorating the landmark decision reached 17 years ago by the United States Supreme Court in their ruling, Brown versus Board of Education. And we know that that ruling changed the trajectory of public education across the country, including here in Tampa and Hillsborough County. We know that in many ways it was a controversial decision. We know that there's some people who applauded it, who welcomed it. We know that there's some people who questioned it. And we know, in fact, that some people who resisted it. And their resistance, in fact, in many instances, took the form of intentional resistance. For example, many of you are familiar with the expression, "with all deliberate speed." And we know that there are boards of education and school boards, for example, that said, "I don't care what the United States Supreme Court says, I'm not going to do it." So, for example, in 1954, the ruling was issued. I graduated high school in 1964. Guess what schools were still fully desegregated 10 years later? In 1971, when I was here, I testified in federal court before Judge Ben Prinsman because Hillsborough County's school system was still segregated almost 10 years later. And so, with Judge Prinsman's order, they said, "Raymond Shelton, the school board, could stop dragging your feet. Let's get this done." You're going to hear this evening, we're very privileged to have such a distinguished group of people here on the panel who will share with you their perspectives, their understandings in several regarding this decision, the impact that it had, both nationally and locally, including the impact that it had on them personally. Before we do that, I've been asked to acknowledge some very special guests who are in the audience, and of course, all of you are special. And when people ask you to start recognizing and acknowledging people and calling names, you know you're talking. Because you know you're always going to mispronounce somebody's name if it's bad enough. But you're going to omit some names that aren't because. So, aren't because. So, I'm going to apologize and then I'll go ahead and move forward with this. So, please forgive me either if I mispronounced your name or if I omit your name or if those of you who lived this experience as you're experiencing this with us this evening, there are names that will arise in your mind. People who made real contributions, who participated. In some cases, people who suffered, like some of the children, students who were suspended, for example, but they were part of processing process. I'm going to call some names very quickly. I'm going to ask that as I call your name, if you're with us, please stand. And we're going to ask that everyone hold your applause to the very end. So, please, please stand as we go through this right quickly. Thank you. John Dawson, here. My wife, Warren Dawson, returning Warren Dawson. Is John Dawson? Great, excellent, excellent, excellent. Dorita Edgecombe, former school board member and wife, of the late Judge George Edgecombe. Please stand. School board, Shaky Washington. And Shaky was not his name. That was an nickname, they called him Shaky.
Andrew.
What was it?
Andrew Washington.
Right, right, that's it, okay, very good. Wife, right, good, nice, good, very good. And Marcia Mejia and Duane Mallory, here representing Congresswoman Kathy Kastner. Right, there they are, very good. Shirley Lowery, wife of the late esteemed Reverend Dr. Adrian Lowery. Okay? Janelle and Drea Wiles, granddaughter of Jenny D. Wiles, senior. And many of you, again, dear friends and not persons. Felicia Harvey, granddaughter of Jared Harvey and niece of Jared Harvey, senior. Some of you may have worked on the docks back in the day. Vivian Kitchen, instructor and training teacher during integration. Very good, thank you. Kate Wells, granddaughter of Seably Andrews, senior. Present. Okay? And we want to honor the late Sam Horton and the late, I think, E.L. Bean, if I remember correctly. Were very active here in Hillsborough County in the process of both educating children and the desegregation of the school system. Harold Clark, principal. Harold, good. And then, we're very privileged to have Judge Peggy Quinn. Judge Quinn? Quinn, 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 right, excuse me, please forgive me. And then, just two names that I must call, and we're going to ask, and then we're going to give everyone a round of applause. Some of you will remember Oldest Anthony. Oldest was senior class president at Blake High School when the school was desegregating. Some of you will remember him. And some of you, too, will remember the late Rudolph Harris. Rudolph Harris was an educator and a columnist for the Charles S. Bolton and a real activist during that period. Now, please join me in giving a heartwarming and warm welcome. Now, I have the distinct honor and privilege of introducing or presenting to you, introducing some presenting to others, our moderator for the evening. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to read her impressive bio. If you have a copy of the program, you'll find it printed on the back of the program. Speaking of attorney Tammy Bryant Spratlin. And she will be our moderator for the evening. Please join with me in walking in the room to my.
Good evening, everyone. Do you smell that? I think it smells a lot like change in this room. There is an incredible energy. These incredible people that we had in this room that have been honored with your applause. Let's give them another applause, right now. Because with their applause, we're not only applauding them for being here this evening, but we are applauding them for the legacy that they have created of change in our community. And we are so, so grateful for the things that they did to move our community forward. And we know that that is a charge to all of us that we need to continue to push forward tonight and every single night that we have on this earth in the future. My name is Tabi Bryant Spratling and I'm the chief executive officer of Community Tampa Bay. We are an anti-discrimination, educationally focused nonprofit. What we do is we create spaces for people who are different than each other to have conversations across those differences in the pursuit of breaking down prejudices, bias, and stereotypes. It's my honor this evening to serve as your moderator. And I have unquestionably the hardest job in this room this evening. Because what we have as panelists is four keynote speakers, right? We could be here for probably four to six hours and not hear half of what they have to say. So, as a very, very consciously minded moderator, I'm going to say little tonight. And I'm going to make sure that their stories are the ones that really shine through this evening. Before we do that, we have a couple of things to do. So, first is we have an incredible list of sponsors for this evening. I'm going to take the amon's lead here and ask that you hold your applause until the end because we have 11 incredible sponsors this evening. So, Bula Baptist Institutional Church, thank you so much for hosting. Community Tampa Bay. The Corporation to Develop Communities of Tampa Incorporated. Florida Humanities. Florida Press Educational Services. Saturday Morning Breakfast Group. Tampa Bay History Center. Tampa Bay Times, Newspapers and Education. Tampa Housing Authority. Tampa Organization of Black Affairs. And the University of South Florida Racial Justice Institute. Please give me, please give them a round of applause. And we have another committee already coming to the stage right now. Look at this, Ray Arseneau, incredible distinguished panelist. He joined us in St. Pete as well. Hi, Ray, great to see you tonight. Incredible, thank you for joining us. All right, so with that, I want to just give just two minutes of an overview of this project. So, this project has been a partnership with the Tampa Bay Times, Newspapers and Education, and Community Tampa Bay. What I'm so excited to share with you is that that newspaper booklet that you see at your tables has been disseminated across the state of Florida to high schools and high school teachers. This is a teaching text that teachers can utilize in their classrooms for high school students to be able to tell this story, these stories. Now, we did one for the 50th anniversary, but this new version actually incorporates a lot of testimonials, a lot of oral history. So, we've been able to preserve this oral history with this document. And again, we have the opportunity for teachers to teach this across the state of Florida. This is, of course, incredibly important right now. And we're so, so grateful that we have this as a resource. It's the primary document that can be utilized in our classrooms. The program also included the ability for us to teach teachers how to use this document. So, we had a webinar where teachers from across the state of Florida were able to learn how to use the document in their classrooms. We've also hosted a similar program with local panelists in the cities of Jacksonville, Tallahassee, Miami, and St. Petersburg. So, here we are now with our fifth version of this event here in the city of Tampa. Because we had Ms. Chloe and we had Mr. Fred and Ray Arseneau joined us in St. Petersburg. And they said, "You know what? We need to do this again in Tampa." So, thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your vision, for seeing this happen. And look at this incredible room. That's 250-some RSVPs this evening. So, thank you so much to all of you for being here. Yes. Now, one final thing before we get into the actual panel discussion is that we do have a special recognition that we want to provide to someone who unfortunately... Well, I'll leave it there, I'll let Ms. Chloe tell.
You look beautiful out there. I'm going to call on my good friend here, Dr. Joel Smith. Shannon Smith. And she is the founder of USA Black Life Institute. And we want to make a presentation to someone really, really special in our community. Someone turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Chloe. What an exciting, exciting evening. Would you please just join me in giving Chloe a round of applause? So, for me, it is a very, very special, special opportunity. And I've been given two seconds, but I'm not sure about two seconds. Bringing us together, bringing us together for the 70th anniversary of Reverend Oliver Leon Brown. Brown versus the Board of Education. Brown versus the Board of Education for this 70th anniversary. And it is indeed a very, very special honor for me to be participating just for a second. And there is a special individual that has worked very, very, very hard, though we all work, work hard. She has done so much in the area of education and she's done so much in the area of this community. Outstanding, brilliant. Fourth generation native Tampa, fourth generation. She received a BA degree at Cornell University in New York, a master's degree and a PhD in sociology at Duke in North Carolina. She's the author of a couple of books. Actually, I brought one here with me to show you the work that's been done in Brazil. She's interviewed families, she's worked with families in Brazil and has continued to do that. Brazil, many of you may or may not be aware, but the language is Portuguese. And this professional worked in Brazil with Portuguese. Here at the university, very briefly, she's held various different roles, many of you aware of that. Senior advisor to the president and the provost of President Law. She's been interim vice president and vice provost for faculty for recruitment and retention. She has done so much on that campus and those of us who have worked at the University of South Florida realizes it. And so, with her tenure, she's played major, major roles. She's recognized by colleges and universities throughout the country. When the Hillsborough County School Board voted, as many of you know, to close just, our commissioner was there alone with so many others, but she was there. They voted four to three, she was there. We, Bula Baptist Institutional Church, under the leadership of our lead pastor, adopted just elementary school. And we will continue to support that particular school along with others. Well, I can see Chloe getting restless up here a few minutes. But let me tell you why Chloe and her committee decided. We do so much for so many people. And many times, we are not aware of the work that's being done at our universities. This young brilliant woman has been on board. Tampa is her home. She was right there, she was giving presentations about social justice. Well, I tell you, one of my friends is a former dean's wife. She heard this young woman and she didn't just hear, she put a million dollars down to start the Social Justice Institute. And she is now the founding and first director of the Social Justice Institute at the University of South Florida. Dr. Elizabeth, would you please come forward, Freeman? And watch this, now, before I leave this stage, I'm asking you, my daughter Freeman is at the university as well. He will be traveling with her. We are losing them. Rice University, can you believe it? The private school in Hilton is taking them away. I mean, we are just really, really sad. Dr. Elizabeth, we are proud of you. We wanted to recognize you. I understand your parents are here as well. Thank you for the...
I had the opportunity to work with Dr. Horace Freeman a couple of years ago on the Racial Justice Initiative. And I know that this is a loss for our community here. However, I also know that she's going to continue to tell her story and she's going to continue the work over in her new position. So, we're so grateful for her. Okay, we're about to get started with a panel discussion. How's that sound? All right, so, again, there's going to be a little bit, it's going to be a little bit more like mini TED Talks as opposed to a panel discussion. Because we have some incredible stories that we need to make sure are told this evening. And so, we're also going to kind of preserve some time by not getting into bios. The bios are infinitely long and there's not enough time for us to tell you everything you need to know about each of these panelists. However, we have included bios in your printed materials. And I do encourage you to review those printed materials. In fact, you will also find some longer stories in the interviews in the publication as well. And then, finally, if you go on the Newspapers and Time, or the Newspapers and Education, Tampa Bay Times website, you will also find more interviews on there that have been preserved. So, there's a lot of incredible resources that I'd love to point you to. With that, I am going to introduce our first panelist who's going to speak this evening. And that is going to be Ms. Brenda, or Dr. Brenda Walker. Dr. Brenda Walker is going to have a bit of a PowerPoint and get us started with kind of a foundation of how we get to the Brown versus Board of Education decision. Dr. Walker.
I can't see them. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, my name is Brenda L. Walker. I'm a professor at the University of South Florida, where I have been for the past 32 years. And I'm also an attorney. So, one of the first orders of business for me today is to set the stage on why I am so invested in the Brown v. Board of Education up to case. Did it advance? Okay, ready. Setting the stage, okay. So, first of all, let me just tell you this. The Brown v. Board of Education is everything. It undergirds all of my work at the University of South Florida for the past 32 years. I have tracked the case. And let me just tell you this to my dear legal colleagues, to the lawyers in the house. I had no intention of going to law school at the age of 51. But it is because of the Brown v. Board of Education case that I did. You know, I thought when I got my PhD that I would be able to use it effectively to improve outcomes for African-American children and youth. I went back to school, to law school in 2004, which happened to be the 50th anniversary of the Brown case so that I could add another layer of advocacy and agency. And what else you need to know about me is that through special invitation, on May 17, 2024, guess where my husband Andre Walker and I were? We were at Howard University celebrating the 70th anniversary of the Brown case. And the next day, on the 18th, we were at the Smithsonian African-American History, a Museum of History and Culture, celebrating. I had the luxury, the privilege, and the pleasure of hearing directly from Cheryl Henderson Brown of the Brown case, from several of the Little Rock Nine members, and from the, some of the plaintiffs that were in the earlier Brown cases. So, I want to start by saying that it all started with Plessy V. Ferguson. May 18, 1896, that's the Supreme Court decision. And just, and so I'm going to be really brief and I'm going to go fairly quickly. But Homer Plessy was 7 8ths white, 1 8ths black. And he deliberately engaged in an act of civil disobedience. He deliberately sat in the whites-only section and challenged the Separate Card Act of 1890 in Louisiana. And that's where that whole doctrine and after going to law school, what some call legal fiction of separate but equal came about. And I want to tell, you know, we know a lot about Brown. We often don't hear a lot about the cases that preceded Brown and that were a part of the consolidated, the consolidated cases of Brown. So, let me start with Briggs V. Elliott. Is that on the screen, Briggs Elliott? Okay, good, wonderful. And that was in 1949. And so, look at the states that were involved, South Carolina. And this one was simply, the plaintiffs were denied bus transportation for black students. There were white buses, but there were no buses for black students who had to walk many miles to get to school. And so, sort of the legal issues were, should buses be provided for black children? That was the first part of the case. And the order was no, the decision was no. The second part of the case was, should school segregation, desegregation be abolished? The school, I'm sorry, should school segregation be abolished? The answer, the legal answer, decision was no. And what the courts did was they ordered that school facilities to be equalized due to 14th Amendment violations. The next case, 1951, Bowling V. Sharp, Washington, DC. And the facts were that 11 black students deliberately tried to be enrolled at the white schools. They were denied. The question was, should black students be permitted to enroll in white schools? The decision was no, that they could not based solely on their race. The next case, Davis V. Prince Edward County, 1951, Virginia. This, ladies and gentlemen, was the only case that originated, that was a student-led protest, which was incredible. Barbara, look up, on your leisure, look up Barbara Rose Johns. That was a student. And the question was, should school segregation be abolished? And the answer was no. The decision was no, but they ordered school facilities to be equalized. The fourth case, Belton V. Gethart, 1951, Delaware. The fact, black students attempted deliberately, and I'll come back to that, deliberately attempted to enroll in white schools. The legal issue was, was the 14th Amendment violated due to unequal facilities and buses? And the decision was yes. So, this was the case that was won at the lower court. However, it was appealed, which brings us to Brown and all of the consolidated cases. Oliver Brown was the lead plaintiff. And many people think that Oliver Brown was chosen to be the lead plaintiff because alphabetically, of all the plaintiffs, his name came first. It did not. He was deliberately chosen because he was a man and he was head of household, head of the household. And the legal issue was, is school segregation unconstitutional? The answer, the Supreme Court decision unanimously overturned... The answer, the Supreme Court decision unanimously overturned that Plessy V. Ferguson's "separate but equal" doctrine and ordered school desegregation. So now I'd like to briefly talk about what's real striking for me about the Brown case and all of the consolidated cases that made up Brown was how the NAACP and the legal team, Charles Hamilton Houston, and we know Thurgood Marshall, how they strategized. And this is what's really striking for me, the strategies. They carefully selected their plaintiffs, just like they selected Oliver Brown. They wanted plaintiffs that were beyond reproach. And here's the other thing, you can't file a law case on speculation. So you can't say, I think if I had tried to enroll in white schools, that I would be denied. So they had each of those plaintiffs to deliberately attempt to enroll in white schools and then be denied. And then also, they learned from previous cases. One of the things that I shared with you from some of the other cases, the previous cases, was it was about where the courts would say, okay, we can still have separate but equal, but perhaps we just need to equalize the facilities or equalize the busing. So what Thurgood Marshall and his team decided was that was not enough for Brown to just equalize facilities. They provided testimony on the great sociologists Mamie and Kenneth Clark, their DOWS studies. And I don't know, if you could click on the link. Now I wanted you to just hear, this was a recreation of the early DOWS studies. Okay, thank you.
I decided we conduct this test as Dr. Clark to see how we progress these studies. Can you show me the doll that you like best or that you like the most? That one?
This one.
And can you show me the doll that is the nicest doll? And why is that the nicest doll? And can you show me the doll that looks bad? Okay. And can you give, and why does that look bad?
Because it's black.
Hmm, and why do you think that's the nicest doll?
Because she's white.
And can you give me the doll that looks like you? Fifteen out of the twenty-one children prefer the white doll.
So what those studies, and I believe that that's what was most persuasive and convincing for the Supreme Court, when they heard that testimony. And they, what they said was there was like a badge of inferiority that segregation places on Black children. So last but certainly not least, so here's some of my musings and reflections over Brown. And what I'm seeing, so I prepare teachers and principals. So this is what I'm seeing as I'm in and out of schools. So one of the reflections that I have is just about the massive resistance. You already heard about how the decision was in nineteen fifty-four. And I understand here in Tampa, desegregation didn't happen until nineteen seventy-one. And I also have the privilege of listening to my husband, who was a senior. So he had to spend his senior year away from Middleton at Leighton High School. So when I listened to him and his classmates talk, and you could still even hear their voices shaking, how traumatic that was for them, but the massive, massive resistance. And then also think a lot about, you know, the whole reason that Brown came about was to overturn the separate but equal. So today we have desegregated schools. I often wonder, do our children still get an equal education? Perhaps we're together, but unequal. And then I also think a lot about Black children's identity and self-esteem, as you heard from the DOWS study. And I would be calling on some of you in this room because I have vowed that this year, twenty twenty-four, I'm going to recreate the study. But I'm not just going to do it with elementary-aged children. I'm also going to do it with middle school students as well. Black principals and teachers, you know, so when I was at Howard, we got to hear from Leslie Fenwick, who wrote a book called Jim Crow's Pink Slips. And that book, the thesis of that book is all of the Black teachers and principals that were displaced as a result of school desegregation, many of whom were more qualified than the white teachers that took over their teaching and principal positions. And last but certainly not least, Brown was certainly a forerunner desegregating not just schools, but other segments of our society, lunch counters and so forth, and also students with disabilities. So Brown was also a forerunner of civil rights cases. But I think it begs the question still, before I take my seat, I think we all have to ask ourselves the question. Has Brown fulfilled its promises for African-American children and youth? Or is it what some would say was a failed social experiment? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Mr. Fred Kearns, curator of Black History at the Tampa History Center, proud Middleton High School graduate. I really appreciate it. If you could start off telling us a little bit about your journey through our public schools. And I think Dr. Walker really started you off because I know you have a lot of feelings about the impact on Black teachers and the impact on Black students losing the opportunity to be taught by Black teachers through desegregation. Would you tell us your story? I can give you that mic, but let me get to sit down.
Thank you, Tammy. I think I'll stay. Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by paying tribute to one of my role models for the last fifty years or so, Attorney Dylan Stewart. His loving wife, Attorney Carolyn Stewart, and also just who, yes. So as Askeya said, you get in trouble when you start calling names. But I had to pay tribute to Dell Stewart. Now I'll just be brief, but I have to give you some of my story here. Growing up in Tampa, in all segregated schools, the first white classmate I had was my junior year in college at USF. And that happened to be Ernest Creel, who was one of my classmates at Middleton High School. So Chloe's going to tell you her experience, was sort of the exact opposite of mine. And she'll tell you what we mean by that when I left Middleton High School. But going back and reading some of the research and what happened, I was here in most of nineteen seventy-one. But when the schools actually desegregated in September, I left Tampa, went to Southern University in Baton Rouge. I worked there four years. And when I came back, we were still going through the adjustment, if you want to call it that. Attorney Dawson, back in nineteen seventy-six, along with several other people here in Tampa, testified before the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights about the process of desegregation. Because the federal government wanted to know, well, five years after you have desegregated the public schools in Hillsborough County, how are things going? That was basically what they wanted to know. And I love him for the fact that he gave credit and recognition to Attorney Francisco Rodriguez, who filed the first case back in nineteen fifty-eight, the Manning case here in Hillsborough County. I actually knew Andrew Manning. And, you know, for many years, I always thought that he was the first one, or his case was the first one to go to the courts. Well, and true, back in nineteen fifty-five, you actually had the first student, Black student, to desegregate public school in Hillsborough County. But it happened at Lakedale Air Force Base. Federal government, okay? So that's probably why that happened. And then one of the reasons that when Chloe and I first talked about doing this program tonight, and this is really Chloe's baby. Chloe said, we had so much fun. We did so many good things in St. Petersburg. We got to Tampa. And I said, oh, Beulah Catholic, the institutional church. Thank you, Pastor. I said, we gotta go to Beulah. Reverend A. Leon Lowry. His son Benjamin, who was a special needs child, one of the first Black children from Hillsborough County to go to a public school, along with one of my other mentors, the late Robert W. Saunders, and his son Bobby, who also desegregated Hillsborough County schools in nineteen sixty-two. So there were many examples. But it was nineteen seventy-one when the masses of Black children first attended Black schools. And the late Al Davis was one of those people who testified before the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. And the question was put to him, how do you think things are going? And Al said, this is not fair. Black children are bused ten years out of the twelve years they're in public schools. And white students are only bused two years out of those twelve years. How can that be fair? People were skirting all around there. Well, the response came back, well, you know, there are so many more white students. They make up eighty percent of the student population in Hillsborough County. If we bused all of them, the cost would be enormous and we wouldn't be able to afford it. So it's economically more feasible to bus the smaller number of Black students for ten years. I mean, you know, just crazy. So what we had in nineteen seventy-one, and Askeya, Mahana Akia was at the center of it, as those are favorites, if I may say that, Imam. The violence that we had, the resistance that we had at Plant High School, at Hillsborough High School, and I'm sure many other schools, where Black students were thrown into a world that we really had very little knowledge of. And not only that, and someone mentioned the plight of the teachers, the Black teachers, the Black administrators, the Black coaches. My high school principal at Middleton High School was Andrew J. Farrell, Jr. In nineteen seventy-one, Mr. Farrell made the decision, rather than go to a high school and be an assistant principal or dean or whatever they're going to make him, he retired. I'm sure before he really had planned to retire. But this is something I love about my principal. And I didn't realize this until much, much later in life. If you go to the Robert W. Saunders Public Library in Nebraska, and for you, there is a photograph of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. The only picture I've seen of Dr. King when he visited Tampa in nineteen sixty-one. And he's sitting on the stage at the Armory, Fort Onnesley Armory, where there were some four thousand people who turned out on a Sunday evening to hear him talk. And there is A.J. Farrell, Jr., my principal, sitting next to Dr. King. I didn't even know that he was involved in the Civil Rights Fund then. It was kind of kept on the down-low. You know, teachers were, I had them around left and right all over Florida. Sitting on the other side of Dr. King was Reverend Lowry. And so the last thing that I'll say is that at the Tampa Bay History Center, for the last three years, I've done everything I could to help give people the opportunity to tell these stories, to celebrate our heroes, our heroes, to make sure that our children know that we come from tremendous stock. We come from a very strong people to have survived what we have survived and still be here today. You know, there was a time when I was a boy when I heard somebody say, you know, Frederick, that's what they called me then, Frederick, you can be anything you want to be. You can even be the President of the United States. And they might as well have said, you can be Superman. But now we've had President of the United States who's a Black. We elected him twice. So you really can achieve. And look at from whence we came, on those landships. I hate to think about it. So what we're trying to do evening is just to bring together these scholars and these people who have stories to tell. As I take my seat, I want to know you, I want you to know how I really love the fact that George Schroeder Middleton, you know, is the man for whom my high school was named. Tigers in here, just raise your hand. I know we have some. I know we have some Middleton High School Tigers in here. George Schroeder Middleton worked with, knew Dr. Meredith Claudia Thune. He was Secretary of Central Industrial Insurance Company when she was president. He knew Dr. W. E. B. Du Bois, was on the committee that brought Dr. Du Bois to Tampa in nineteen sixteen. He also knew James Weldon Johnson, the man who wrote that song we sang to open up his program this evening. And so many other people, he knew, he knew them firsthand. So we have so much to hold our hands up high about. Let us continue to do that. Let us pour as much of this love and strength that we can wrap our arms around into our children. They are the future. Thank you.
Ms. Plevickoni, you integrated our schools here. You have a story that was actually inspired by that same presidential visit. I'm wondering if you can start there and tell us a little bit about your story and inspiration.
Thank you, Tammy. I tell you, my heart is just overwhelmed. I'm trying to, because I've been telling everybody, the ones that are sitting here, many of you are there. We're the last generation that went through segregation. And if we don't tell our story, it's not going to tell. And I have to give credit to Jody with Tampa Times when she interviewed me. I talked about my pastor, because I gave her the second story. I talked about Reverend Dr. A. Leon Lowry. She said she did not know him. But she went back and did her research. And he's in that magazine there. So that's the reason it's important to tell our story. And as Fred said, we did this a month ago over in St. Pete. Well received. And I said, Fred, why are we not doing this in Hillsborough County? Why are we not in Tampa? So today, I want to say thank you for each one of you for coming out. You blessed my soul tonight. So thank you for that. My history, I'm sure we all know, the woman that wears my hat. I was raised here in West Tampa. And I want to say, in our Black community in the fifty and sixties, we had three major institutions. Number one was our family. Many of us had to live in West Tampa, East Tampa, Rockfish Village, and then like you are in the car, say. We cannot live anywhere else. So we knew our neighbors. We had a sense of community. And I'm thankful that my mother, Mary Mitchell, she was involved in the community. She always supported me. In fact, my stepfather, Little C Hayes, was one of the first Black to start driving the bus. to start driving the bus for the heart. Now, being raised here in West Tampa, the second institution, of course, was our church. And we're here. And this is my church I was raised, came here when I was four years old. And of course, having the Reverend Dr. A. Leon Lowry being our pastor. On Sundays, I think many of you know his history. He was the state president of NAACP. He really taught Dr. Martin Luther King. He also became a school board member. But as a child here, sitting in the congregation there, many times he would talk about civil rights. He talked about helping to integrate the lunchroom kind. He talked about what is your responsibility to civil rights. And then I would hear him talk about faith without words. I'm not gonna preach, y'all. Faith without words. And I tell you, that thirteen-year-old girl that integrated the school system heard that service, okay, that service. Now, the third institution was our schools. I'm glad I went to Dunbar, and was separated, I went to Just, and I have two classmates here. Y'all raise your hand. Went to school with me at Just, we're the first class there, the brand new. And we had our principal there, Mr. Harold Clark. And he came through and he wanted to know who he can get to integrate the school system. I didn't know this, but to my husband, I've been married to my husband, September will be fifty-five years. Y'all remember that? He's a pride, yellow jacket, nineteen sixty-five, played running back in the Jets, okay? But again, we have, we know our schools and our community. And I wanna say that as, uh, in eighth grade, you're right, Tammy, when President John Kennedy came to Tampa, they allowed us to get out of school. We went to Grand Central Boulevard there, that was Kennedy. And we got a chance to see the doctor, uh, out of C.C., our president, John Kennedy. And he made an impression upon me when he said one time, "I know what your country can do for you, but what can you do for your country?" And this thirteen-year-old girl believed him. So when Harold Clark came to school, I said, "Who wants to go?" It was three of us from Just. It was Patricia Kipper's, Henry White, and myself. We left and went to West Tampa Junior High School. But I must give credit to the teachers we had. We might have had the poor books, the bad books, or the secondhand books, but we had awesome, great teachers that poured into us the wealth of knowledge and the love. And Fred is right, they told us we can be anything we wanna be. So to the legacy that I had of Mr. Randolph Kenzie, to my teacher, Ms. Margaret Mays, to my teacher, Ms. Eloise Cabrera, and to my special, she became Congresswoman, Sylvia Kimball. They told me, "Chloe, you're making A's and B's at this black school. When we send you to the white school, we know you will make A's and B's." And that's the kinda legacy they left in all of us. So of course, when I went to West Tampa, I was in Honor Society. I left there, I went to the Jefferson, the old Jefferson. In sixty, uh, five, sixty-six, I was, uh, made into the National Honor Society and the Student Mothers Secretary. Had a wonderful time. Then my senior year happened. Blew away there. They closed Old Jefferson and sent us to Hillsborough High School. Now, you know Hillsborough High School is the oldest school here in Hillsborough County. White privilege at its best in sixty-seven when I went there. I was told that because I made the Honor Society and Jefferson and other clubs, I was not valid. Could not be in there, even though I deserved to be there. I was told that when I raised my hand in class, half the time putting back in the class, called the N-word, they were with the pet about it. Culture shock. They had the Confederate, Confederate flag running around the auditorium and singing Dixie. I wish we were in the L.A. Atticodex. Many days, I literally cried and said, "Lord, what did I get myself into?" But when I graduated from Hillsborough, my mother said, "I walked up to the stage, snatched my little diploma, and said, 'I am never coming back to this greatness, prejudice school.'" That was in nineteen sixty-eight. I had a scholarship to USF, Florida State, but I chose to go to Florida A&amp;M. And if y'all listen in the house, I'm proud of y'all. Wonderful time, it's freshman, it's Delta, everything, I enjoyed it. Elias is a hero, okay? Enjoy, best decision. And then I wanna come back and say that God knows how to turn it around. I'm standable now. Y'all are gonna preach it, you know? Let's go back to when I graduated from Hillsborough High School and told me I was not worthy to be in their National Honor Society. I was not worthy to be in their social clubs and called me the N-word and put me in the back of the class, come on. But I've come to that and telling y'all that God is faithful. He knows how to turn it around. And in twenty twenty-one, Hillsborough High School, Hillsborough High School, adopted that black boy into the hall. Now, that's the reason that I wanted to have this here. We have to tell our children our story. We have to tell them the struggles we've been through. But we have to tell them the victories and how God has bought us over. Our children, they can be what they want to be. So today, I give God the glory and I want that story. As I finish FAMU and said, "I'm dead, I ain't part of Tampa, I'm never gonna integrate anything else. Only God can do this at FAMU." Department of Corrections came to FAMU, was looking for blacks to go into that field. So once again, I raised my hand, because they said, "Pay all your student loans," that's a true statement. So I graduated in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-one. And June of nineteen seventy-two, Department of Corrections hired me as their first female probation officer. This is June of nineteen seventy-two. And when I went to do a present investigation with my supervisor, I and Russ King went up there and the guy came out from the store with a gun, pointed to me and thought he'd be my boyfriend. I made up my mind, and tears just coming through my eyes and said, "Lord, when I get myself back again..." I was able to go to the courtroom, and I had two mentors. And I think God for mentors said, "Please make sure you tell their story, okay?" My first mentor, and he was a state attorney by this time, was George Edgecombe. He later became Judge Edgecombe. That's my Sir Rodriguez's husband. And he told me, "Chloe, we'll take you out of the field because I know it's dangerous. I'm gonna make you my court service supervisor." So I had the honor of serving him in court, okay? And then the next person I had, and he was a lawyer there, he, you know, and everybody knew him, was Dela Stewart. He's always been my mentor. So Dela, Dela, thank you so much for being there. Because this little girl was standing here, and he told him all that Judge Edgecombe, "Somebody has to do it. Somebody has to stand up and demand a change." So there's still changes to be made. So I hope today we say yes, and we see more of our young people. That's who I challenge all the time, that's who I love speaking to them. To stand up and make that change. So God bless y'all, and y'all bless my soul today for coming. Amen.
How about that Miss Chloe doesn't just invite you to church, but she takes you to church, right? Thank you so much for your testimonial. We're going to, to learn more in just a bit. I, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Gwen Myers.
Say, let the church say amen.
We have to tell a story. Where's our sister? That's my classmate, stand up, classmate. Okay, sixty-eight, well, she was, she was in West Tampa. And she wanted to follow us, and I ride around with her everywhere we met. So we would take her, and we make sure we introduce her. But I'm gonna say, it's a pleasure to have somebody from West Tampa that you know their winner. Come on. You know their winner, and to see where they are. And see how she gives back to this community. Let's give the community a great round of applause.
And then we're talking about Fred and Chloe and Dr. Walker, about change is gonna come. We know we have a song, "The Change Is Coming." Well, in nineteen seventy, I was at Blake. Nineteen seventy-one, I had to go to Plant. Now, you're talking about a change. You're talking about a change. It was very, very difficult going to Plant my junior year. Because all I knew was to be a Yellow Jackets. A Yellow Jacket from West Tampa. Strong Yellow Jackets. And even today, when our class we gather, we talk about the same subject. How we were split of the various schools. For Robinson, Lakeville, Hillsborough, Chamberlain, Plant. But we found the common goal to always come back to all classes of seventy-two. To keep that bond that we thought we was gonna have in our own black schools. But we didn't. You're talking about a change, going to Plant. And then when I was at Blake, I was in the band. Going to Plant, they had like, "We gonna see if you can be in the band." Now, I can play a player on that. And I knew I could march. Okay? Because I can't think of, um, band instructor, but it was from FAMU, so if you had an instructor from FAMU, you knew you knew how to march. You didn't get nothing else, in how to turn and all. But nevertheless, that was a setback. And just going to classes, we were not accepted. But we had to go. And in my mother's house, you had to get an education. Whether it was Plant, Robinson, whatever. Okay, you had to get your education. You can come home and you can cry every day, coming home, "Mama, why? Mama, why? We have experienced this when everyone else could graduate from Blake or Middleton. Why me?" When I'm thinking that Yellow Jacket. And it's ironic. Blake, black and gold. Plant, black and gold. Okay, we had the colors, but it was not the same. Okay? Had the school colors, but we're not the same. So I will point what I'm saying today. And I say this often. We would think where we are in America, in Hillsborough County, desegregation is still, the canvas that we hear is still among us. I wonder if racism gonna ever change? I'm just being honest. You know, I get the calls as a commissioner if I don't vote the right way, the hate calls. But see, you look at when this started years ago and today, we in twenty twenty-four. And you have to ask yourself, "Look over your life. What could I do better to try to help the young people to understand you still have to get an education? They gonna take everything from us, but you have to stay the course." It's not easy. Ask me, when I graduated from Plant, I couldn't wait to get the FAMU out with that summer. Okay, I'm going in the summer because I wanted that culture that I was missing from Plant. You know, when you're used to that culture and being around, oh, it was the joy to get up on the hill. Now, trust me, we're talking about education. But you have to know the purpose. And it's the same for the students today in high school. And I would say this, I mentioned it to my husband when I was coming here. And he said, "You know, I was a part of that Manning suit that was filed in nineteen fifty, his daughter, the late L. Maya Hodges. He was in that suit with the cannons and the Mannings, but the Mannings laid the weight." And you still look at today, what are we facing? You think it's better? Talk to me, just with you, you think it's better? You think we getting better? Is it getting any worse? Okay, we can say it's kinda medium, okay? But we should, by now, be further advanced. Further advanced as a race of people. Further advanced on all the lawsuits that have been filed over the years. And we're still struggling today, even to get into the university. Oh, I know y'all see it on TV. He talking about education. So when it finished taking everything from us, what is gonna be left? And if we don't continue to fight for what we want and let our voices be heard, even me as a commissioner is only one that I have to fight on. And I'm not afraid to go across the hour. But if you believe in what you believe in, it's okay to stand alone. It's okay. You know, you can, your board of meetings over, you can say, "Lord, I did what I was supposed to do, I'm okay." I'm okay. And so, I'm gonna end it up and say, "Thanks so much for taking time to come." Because this truly was a teachable moment and an educational experience from here on the panel as well, for me as well. Thank you all so much.
Commissioner Myers, in the spirit of change, you're working on an initiative right now here in Hillsborough County. I'd like for you to talk about that for a moment.
That would be my African-American Art and Cultural Center.
That would be it.
Thank you so much. It's coming soon. A fifty thousand square foot African-American Art and Cultural Center that is gonna be located at twenty-one zero-three North Rome Avenue in West Tampa. There's something about West Tampa that I really, really like. But that was some property that the board county commissioners already owned, was easy to select. So today, we raised fifteen point five million dollars to build this facility. And we held six community engagement meetings. And it's been so overwhelming of the support from the community. You're talking about the art, just the art. Had one, um, person came to the meeting two weeks ago and was talking about journalism and how you can tie journalism into a meteoric component with music. But the, the Cultural Center is going to have amphitheater, sculpture garden. We'll have where we can plug the food trucks, we'll charge in, and all. It's gonna be very unique and different. It's gonna offer a lot because we are in partnership with Visit Tampa Bay. It's gonna be run by Hillsborough County, shared with Hillsborough County Park and Recreation Center, but led by the Tampa Bay African-American Art and Cultural Center, Inc. That was a nonprofit that is gonna lead the way. And we're raising money, so I want to invite you all now, get your phones out, because that's how we're supposed to keep our calories today. June 10th, which is June nineteenth, at ten AM at twenty-one zero-three North Rome Avenue, we're gonna have our Capitol Campaign kickoff. Now, the Capitol Campaign kickoff is to raise money. Okay? We're ten million short, we have to have twenty-five million in the county, keep challenging before I can break ground. So I'm gonna honor the county wishes and get them, put some more money in the budget so I can get that other ten million that I need so we can break ground. But we want the community involved, to come and be involved. This is for the community, designed with the input by the community. And so, I can make one more announcement. And so I can make one more announcement, please. Thank you. On June 23rd, we're going to have Unity in the Community. And you got to keep your cameras out, keep your phones out, at Al Barnes Park. I think that's 2902 North 32nd Street from 1 to 5. That is something that we're working with our youth. The 509 Committee came out of the closing of Just to say, "How can we deal with community issues?" So I invite you to see my news notice, you see that information in there. So I invite you to those two begins to come out and be a part. It takes our community to keep things together. I know we can disagree, as I told Fred Hearns, when they voted to close Just. That was the first time in my life I saw the community. When we came together, everybody that didn't like each other, they liked each other and spoke at the school board to say just. And that's what we have to continue to do. Put the difference aside, we have a lot of community issues that we need to address. Thank you so much.
Dr. Ray Arseneau, Professor Emeritus, University of South Florida, and the author of the most recent and my favorite, the books that talk about Congressman John Lewis. Dr. Arseneau, you finished your book this year. You talked at length with John Lewis over the years when you still could. And he talked a lot about lawyers and how the civil rights movement needed the lawyers to be able to push toward the legal aspects that were accomplished in Brown versus Board of Education and the further dismantling of Jim Crow laws. Tell us a little bit about how the Brown decision served as a foundation for John Lewis and for other activists in the civil rights movement.
Well, I want to begin by saying that I really feel honored being here with you today in the Larry L. Lowery Center. I've long been a great admirer of his. I moved back to Florida in 1980, and I had a great good fortune to spend an afternoon with Reverend Lowery. And I'd heard about him, but you had to experience him to really know what an extraordinary man and leader he was. So I always thought that we never had quite anyone quite like that in St. Petersburg where I live. We had some civil rights leaders, but I think Reverend Lowery was special. So it's really wonderful to be here. As Tammy said, I've spent the last few years researching and writing about John Lewis. John was a close friend of mine, we had a 20-year friendship. Spent a lot of time with him, trying to learn from him. When I finally published the first biography of him in January, I decided to use the subtitle, "In Search of the Beloved Community." That really was what his life was all about. Searching for the beloved community was, of course, a phrase that he sort of borrowed from Dr. King, but others have used it before, but John made it his own. I have a sense that this gathering tonight, this room, is about as close as you're going to find the beloved community in the United States. So you should really be proud that we've come together here to talk about a very important topic. You know, historians have long regarded the Brown decision as one of the most important events in American history. Everyone seems to agree on that. Not everyone agrees, obviously, on interpreting the strengths and weaknesses of the decision. And I want to just take a couple of minutes to give you the sense of how most historians see the Brown decision. Because it's a complicated thing. As many of you know, there were actually two Brown decisions. There's the Brown decision of May 17th, 1954, where the Supreme Court unanimously struck down Bleszynski versus Ferguson, the separate but equal doctrine. But not so many people know about the second Brown decision, May 31st, 1955. That's the so-called implementation decision. You've probably heard the phrase, "With all deliberate speed," whatever that means, right? Well, that's what the court came up with in May of 1955. In a sense, I think they lost their nerve a bit. They were shaken by the massive resistance which had emerged the previous year. People were telling them there might be a civil war. They got scared. And so they decided to let things sort of develop. I think maybe they thought it would be naturally. And I don't think they thought it would be another 17 years before the Brown decision would have any real major effect. And so the way historians look at this is that the Brown decision is important both for its successes and its failures. It demonstrates the power of the law. I mean, just the fact that the federal court system is speaking through the Supreme Court finally said that African-Americans could be and should be full citizens. That had never really been said before. A kind of complete reversal of the Gretzky decision of 1857, which said that black people could never be citizens of the United States. So in symbolic terms, it's incredibly important for people's self-respect, their hope for the future. And I think there was a real expectation that even though people knew there'd be reaction against the Brown decision, that the schools would be effectively desegregated within three or four or five years. Certainly Thurgood Marshall believed that. And he came to be bitterly disappointed by the response of white America. And I think particularly in black America, there was a lot of disappointment. A lot of people telling people, "We told you so. You can't legislate morality. You can't really change things with a court decision." But the long-term effect on the civil rights movement, or what we now call the African-American Freedom Struggle, was that the Brown decision created a kind of platform for people to hope, to think that they might have a chance to win in the courts. But the reality was, it also showed, maybe even more emphatically, that you can't depend on the law to give you freedom. You've got to get it yourself. Nobody's going to give it to you. And of course, what happens is when the disappointment settles in in the late 50s and early 60s, that makes the way for the transition to nonviolent direct action. Taking the struggle out of the courts and into the streets. And that's when the movement becomes a kind of movement culture, where people are getting involved in something larger than themselves. The genius of Dr. King or John Lewis and the others, who put their bodies on the line, who were willing to die for a cause. I don't think too many people are willing to die for a court decision. But they were willing to die for the chance for a moral reformation of American life, of changing the hearts and minds of people. And that's really what the movement of the 1960s and after has been all about. And I'm not sure it would have happened when it did or how it did without the failure of the Brown decision. So there's a great irony there. Brown pushed things forward, but by failing, it sort of reoriented people's belief in the power of citizenship. You know, the power of ordinary people to do extraordinary things. I don't think they felt that way out of the Brown decision. But by the mid-60s, with all the extraordinary things and sacrifices, the kind of unmerited suffering that so many civil rights activists went through, that we've become a different nation. Obviously, not as much as we would have liked, right? It's a bittersweet story. We haven't reached the beloved community, many except in rooms like this, right? So trying to figure out what the Brown decision did and what it did not do, and how it affected the Freedom Struggle, is one of the most important things that we can do, that historians can do certainly. And I can tell you, there are literally hundreds of professional historians who've devoted their entire careers studying this process. It's one of the most vital subfields in all of historical study. Historians of civil rights have won more Pulitzer Prizes than any other subfield because it hits people where they live. I mean, the stories that we have to tell, the narratives about these incredibly heroic people like John Lewis. John Lewis was exceptional, maybe unique. I've been going around the country talking about him since the book came out in January. And I can't tell you how much adoration and respect I have felt from the people who come up to me after I speak. Not because of my speed, but because they connect to John Lewis. That this search for the beloved community is something that I think many of us aspire to do. And so it's sometimes difficult, as I want to tell you, to keep your hope up with the state of American politics and assault on American democracy. But John Lewis never gave up. He never wavered for a moment. Even after he got pancreatic cancer in late 2019, that didn't stop him for a second. I always remember just before he went, the day before he went into the hospital, finally, before he died, he summed up what energy he had left to go out to the Black Lives Matter Plaza north of the White House. And I have a photograph in my book of him, you know, he's got his mask on because it's COVID and all that. But here's this 80-year-old man reaching down, whatever strength he had left, to make this sort of statement that all those people who went into the streets to support the Black Lives Matter movement, it was a potential revolution. It was something he'd been, as he said, he'd been waiting for all his life. And so I think even though those years were tough for him and for many of us, it left us with a legacy and a hope. And so I think that's what gave us all strength to carry on this struggle. As John always said, "It's not a sprint, it's a marathon." And freedom is a struggle. And of course, sadly, he lived long enough to see the Voting Rights Act, which he risked his life for, which he fought for more than anyone else, totally disbanded by the Supreme Court. And now, of course, the Voting Rights Act is now billed, is named for him. And maybe we'll all live long enough to see it reenacted and a real return to American democracy. But I think we've got a lot to be proud of, the people who started this movement and carried it forward in places like Tampa, communities all over the country, particularly in the deep south and other parts of the south, that regenerated American democracy. I shudder to think what American democracy would have been like without the civil rights movement. Because it really returned us to those ideals, ideals we'd never lived up to. But preserved them and gave us hope for the future. Thank you.
Throughout this evening, young people have been coming up, right? Thinking about John Lewis being a college student when he first began his activism. Commissioner Myers, your talk about moving in your senior year. Ms. Chloe, your experiences in school, moving to Jefferson and then over to Plant. Mr. Hearns, you were talking about being at Mills in high school. I'm thinking about young people because I'm also thinking about in this 19, or this 70th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education decision. We have an article that came out just a few weeks ago that indicates that our schools are desegregated now as they were in 1967. So I know that we are running short on time this evening, but I'd really like to pose the question to all of our panelists. What do you have to say to young people about the Brown decision and the promise of the Brown decision as they're navigating their school systems at this time today?
Thank you, Tammy. And I will just make a quick announcement. And I'm so happy that Commissioner Myers talked about this wonderful edifice that we're going to have very soon in West Tampa. African-American culture and art is so important. And let me honor the name that some of us may have forgotten and some maybe never heard, Dr. Mike Tribble. Dr. Mike Tribble, who taught us to dream big. He was really a man way before his time. But he was the first man I ever heard to quote an African proverb. And he dated in city council one day. I said, "Oh, my goodness." I'd never heard anybody else do that. Anyway, real quickly, Tampa Bay History Center, on the same day that you all are going to be out celebrating Juneteenth in West Tampa at the Oakley facility that Commissioner Myers spoke about. So save some of your energy because later on that evening, at 5:30, you're invited over to... How many of you all remember the dances in Central Park Village? Okay, I got some soldiers out here. You remember that Red Great Church right in front of the auditorium of the Dance for Health? That's the St. James and Episcopal Church building that very soon is going to be Tampa's Black History Museum. Amen. So Ashley Morrow is in the back. And Ashley, I believe you have flyers that will give you more information about what we're going to be doing Juneteenth at 5:30. The Family of Freedom is going to be a beautiful fashion show. And so we're going to have food and refreshments, and Ashley has the flyers. So what can we say to young people? I think that was the question. And we have to continue to give them hope. You know, when you look at the statistics, and my God, our children seem to always be near the bottom when it comes to almost every category you can imagine. But there's a reason for that. And I'm not a professional educator. But I do know that we have got to drill our history into our children, and we've got to do it at home. Because it ain't going to happen at school, I don't believe. Now, there may be some exceptions. But when we realize, and I mentioned earlier, from whence we have come and what we've been able to accomplish, in spite of the odds against us, in spite of racism and bigotry and segregation and discrimination and all of those things that we have experienced, and our children are still experiencing some of that in school, they have to have some successes that will make them, first of all, want to be there. My God, those of us who went to school in the 60s, we couldn't wait to get to school, every day. Because you might miss something if you're not there. You didn't want to miss a day of school. Oh, my God, our things have changed. So we got to give them that love of self. And then that can spread to realizing that if someone said, "You got to get that education." I think that was Commissioner Myers. That's what our parents drilled into us. I don't know how much of that is being drilled into our children today. But for those who were listening, I guarantee, the more we know about our history, the higher we can lift our heads and the more we can achieve because we realize that one with God is a majority. One with, just one. Just one with God is a majority. So I think that's what we need to do. And we can do it in a number of different ways. I know you live at Baptist Institutional Church, pastor. I know you initiated Black History classes. And I visited your library when it opened. And we can all do something. We can all do something.
I would just like to speak to IU to say that you are our future leaders. And I see some of us on Facebook who are about, "Youth are listening." You know, just like we are here today, we have members of the Divine Nine. We have civic organizations. Bring your youth with us when we have these type of events. You can clap because that's what's missing. We're coming, but they're not. And this is how we get them involved. We take them, and I remember several organizations, and I was taught... We take them, and I remember several organizations, and I was thought asking, bring the young people so they can hear, participate. They're our future leaders. How are you going to lead if you don't know what to do, if we don't help train you? So we're training you through various organizations, and we want you to come and be a part. And if you don't do anything else, election 2024, young people, go vote. Thank you.
I'm going to do it real quick because I know that we need to leave. And first of all, I want to thank Reverend Harris. We want to thank you for opening the doors. And as we're talking about legacy, and that's the reason I want to keep saying, bring up those who've gone before us and we stand on their shoulders. But then I always make sure to tell people, who are you passing the time to? Y'all know sometime we see a team that is celebrating thirty-two years. Well, I'm so happy that my son, Ernest, graduated from Dartmouth High School, went to USF, and he decided to follow his mother's legacy. And now he's the president and CEO of CDC of Tampa. You heard us, come around the corner. You heard Dr. Joan Sherrin-Schaeffler talking about being the founder of the Black Institute. We know now that we have a male being picked up by Dr. Freeman. And then she has a young man. Where is David? That was the last thing. David, please stand. I want to make sure, is that David? That's right. He's now, let's come around the corner. He was now a resident of the Black Institute, now the Black Institute of Black Park. Let's wrap our arms around him, make sure that he's very successful. Whatever he needs, make sure we do that. And again, I'm going to challenge all of us, let's open opportunities for our next generation. Put them in charge and support them. That's all I got to say.
So to answer the question, when do I tell youth about the Brown case? Does I encourage you to study it, learn more about it? I reiterate and underscore what Fred said in terms of ensuring that you know who you are, know your history. That certainly further self-esteem. But as an educator, I also talk to you about the implications from Brown for me is to prepare the best teachers that I can for African-American children. And I want them to know that teaching still is the most noble profession. So if you know, if you know that anyone that wants to be a teacher in urban schools, I have just the program for you. Call Me Mister at the University of South Florida. And guess what? Mister Call Me Mister program is a national program. We have the only one in the state of Florida, but it's also open to women as well. So I want to say that. And then let me give a shout out also to Dr. Elizabeth Horch-Freeman. So I got this license for Call Me Mister, this coveted license at University of South Florida. I couldn't get any support anywhere at the University of South Florida for Call Me Mister. And Dr. Elizabeth Horch-Freeman provided support for Call Me Mister. So thank you so much.
Yes, I think this is probably the most important question of the night when we tell young people. Let me just tell you a story. I have a grandson, one grandson, Lincoln, born in Atlanta. He's eight years old. And 2015, and 2015 was also the year of the fiftieth anniversary of the Assembly of the Government March, or of course, Bloody Sunday, as it's sometimes called, where John Lewis led six hundred marchers across the Independence Bridge and was still killed for the effort. I tell myself now that I was too young to be there. I was a high school senior. So I missed that chance to see some history made, but I was determined to be there for the fiftieth anniversary. So I was there with Bernard Lafayette Jr., as some of you may know Bernard. He's perhaps the best-known civil rights leader ever come out of Tampa. He's an international figure, runs nonviolent workshops, even today at the age of eighty-four. He was John Lewis's best friend and his roommate in college and was instrumental to my research on the book and has become a dear friend. So I went with him to that fiftieth anniversary. And we met with about twenty-five young leaders from Ferguson, Missouri, Black Lives Matter leaders. And the idea was that Bernard and I were telling them about the lessons of the Freedom Rights. Somehow we would help them. And I, we maybe, maybe we did something like that. But what I remember is what Bernard and I learned from those kids. They're incredibly impressive and committed to social change and to standing up for what they believed in. I can remember Bernard telling them, you have to remember that there's a difference between a protest and a movement. You've got to somehow turn protest into a movement. You have to have discipline. You have to be in there for the long haul. It can't just be something that happens in the streets and then you go back to your normal life. You have to be committed in a real sense. And I've never, I've never forgotten that, what he told those kids that night. And then finally, I tend to see the world through my grandchildren, thinking, what kind of world are they going to live in? What kind of world are they going to inherit? And one of the happiest moments of my life was when Lincoln was two days old in Atlanta, his home. Bernard Lafayette came over and he put Lincoln on his knee, and he started singing a freedom song, which he had made up in 1961 during the Freedom Rights, called Buses Are Coming. And I was, I tried later to tell Lincoln that he had this great entry into the world. Who else has Bernard Lafayette singing freedom songs when he's two days old? But somehow that moment gave me maybe hope for the future, that there'll be more freedom songs to come.
Thank you so much. But we are going to conclude our panel, and we're going to have some closing remarks in just a moment. Please join me in thanking all of our panelists.
Well, I'd really like to share something with you all that I think is very, very important. Those who don't know, I'm very proud of you. The Supreme Court was the last service in 1945. And I mean, the Supreme Court was the last service, and I'm talking about services, service organization, Department of Defense, was the last service in office in 1946. Yesterday is the Colonel Hope. Colonel Hope was executed yesterday. The first black female, Black with a name, was promoted to Brigadier General of the Supreme Court. It gets better than that. The person who officiated her promotion ceremony was a black female major girl who two years ago was promoted to general officer. I have hope, and I disagree with you, Commissioner Myers, because I don't think that we're so-so. I think that we're going the wrong way, and I think we're on the wrong trajectory. We have the wrong inertia. However, I do have faith. And one of the reasons why I have faith is this year, the Supreme Court, every year, promotes eleven black generals, excuse me, eleven generals at the Supreme Court, eleven. This year, this is why I hope. Three of them are black. The black female that I told you about and two black families. That's why I have.
Okay, so we are just going to have our closing remarks by your mom, and ask he's making his way to the stage. I do want to say that I'm so grateful that you're here this evening. The question around young people, Community Tampa Bay, one of our programs is Anytown, any towns in the Tampa Bay area, thirty years. Any, any town is in the room?
Yeah.
Amazing. Anytown is a life-changing program for youth. We build an inclusive community in one week that changes lives, changes the way that people interact with each other for the rest of their lives. We have two sessions coming up this summer. One is next week, and the next, we have one from July. We have new spots for high school students still. Begin of the July session, we actually filled as of today. Our first session, we have sixty youth committed to building inclusive communities, having conversations, very similar to the previous conversation, starting on Monday. So thank you so much for knowing about that program, for supporting that program, because it is part of the answer of the challenges that we've talked about this evening. And the final thing I'll say is that I did not talk about a card that was, as I was saying, well, it was in the interest of getting to today, which we never did. I pretended we weren't going to get to that. But I want you to use those cards. And in half those cards, I'd like you to think of three young people that you want to tell, a story that either you heard this evening, or someone that you've heard about that's in this room this evening, and you want to do some research with them. Three young people that you can take these messages of this evening and today into another generation. Please do that in those cards. Thank you so much. It's been an honor to be your moderator this evening. You're welcome.
You have been so patient and so gracious. I'm sure you feel the power and the energy in the room. I've been taking notes as I listen to your speaking panelists. I have eighteen pages, and I'm going to go through everyone like that. Before I do that, Dr. Joe Spence, please come share a brief presentation you'd like to present. Second, very, very quick, before he escapes, he thinks he wants to get out of here. If you're going to be an activist and be involved in the movement, but first, if you're going to be a criminal and run the risk of getting arrested, make sure you have a good lawyer and a good bail bondsman. I have the best lawyer. We did a lot of things here. And I have the best lawyer, who became a midwife of lawyers and a judgment. And we could go back and lots of lawyers and judges who owe their careers and successes to this film. And that helps. Again, I mean no disrespect to anyone, but attorney elements. Were not for Dale, where not for Dale and bail bondsman Iowa Glosso, I'd be standing here with a striped suit on. You know what I'm talking about. So I love, I love.
Everybody was sitting here. There's no fight that can make a difference, but this is a fight that I have a kid in front line in that fight. And the reality of it is y'all are open. The fight is all day long forever. Now, if you don't think that way, you're not going to win. And yet, my husband, who ran the law for me, I did not believe that I could beat one you to God, but you will never defeat him. And you understand that the first time we got him acquitted, the chair knocked out of way. And I said, move, or I'm going to heaven or hell, but I'm coming out of this door here. And that was the door we went out. And the fight is not a fight that you can give up on and it's forever. And you have to understand the way I'm going to tell them, fight for freedom, you're never going to be free until you understand you're God's creature, and he, you can do anything that he wants you to do.
Thank you for that. Just in talking, very quick, first of all, I bring to greetings on behalf of the members of the board of directors of the organization that I helped to found and current the service president and CEO of the organization. It's called Collective Empowerment Group of the Tampa Bay Area. Collective Empowerment Group of Tampa Bay Area. I won't take the time, but that name was purposefully constructed to bail bonds. We have to work together. We have to break down the barriers and the silvers. We have to connect the dots. We have to do it. Individuals, blessed by God, can do great things, and no one knows what your potential is. Don't let anybody tell you what you can't do. Only you and God have that. But we're not talking about us as individuals. Dr. King said, April third, 1968, in Memphis, the night before he was shot. And I encourage you, you can hear that entire speech, Dr. Spence. Go back and listen to the full speech. What people remember was, I've been to the mountain top and seen the promised land. I may not make it there with you, but we as a people will make it to the promised land. That was the end of the speech that he gave. You should listen to the entire speech and listen to what he talks about. And remember why he was in Memphis and the people that he was there to help and to serve and to lead and to inspire and to encourage. Listen to the entire speech. One of the things that he talked about, he said, as a people, were we to aggregate our wealth and our political power, we would be the sixth or the seventh or most powerful nation on the face of the earth. Think about that. This is in 1968, when we learn to work together, to bind ourselves. No, you got one finger and one stick, and you can bend it or break it, but when you bind it together? That's the message that he was trying to deliver. Now, fast forward. The enemies of people, the people who do not want to see us, or a lot of other people, not just us, become free and enjoy liberty and justice for all et cetera, they don't stop. They don't quit. They understand that the fight is an, is a constant fight. That's why they go around and dig up dirt, and they go up and dig up dirt on you, and they just sit on the dirt. They might sit on that dirt for years until they need it. And then, and that's happening, isn't that what's happening now? That's what we're witnessing, seeing right now. We have to stay and understand the time that we're in and the things that are happening. Somebody talked about how the Civil Rights Act was being turned back. They talked about, someone mentioned how they're outlawing DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and things that you cannot teach in school in terms of our history. Or if you want to teach it, you have to teach it the way they want you to teach it, and make sure you don't hurt anybody's feelings or make anybody feel bad. You don't do that. Truth makes you free. Tell the truth. You better all tell the truth, even on yourself, even if it makes you feel bad, and then make you face the reality of what you need to do to bring about change. These are some kinds of things. So just, just, just a couple of quick points, and then we're going to close this out again with a very pleasure. And I know we've held some people against their will. Now, just, just a quick, remember. Please, please bear with us just a second, please. I have a responsibility, then I'm going to turn it back over because I will finish what I was called to do. The people who watched from on high and who plotted planning, and they studied, including studying scripture. So they're notable, for example, that God says, these people are going to wander in the wilderness and the desert for forty years, but then a Messiah will lead them out of that desert, out of the wilderness. Why? Because they will have a vision, they'll have unity, they have clarity of purpose, they have sense of goal, direction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We can't let that happen. So Malcolm X, El Hozmelee, El Chavas, was assassinated at thirty-nine years old. Think, listen to me for a second. He and Dr. King had met. He and Dr. King had met and were talking to each other and were listening to each other and saying, we are two sides of the same coin. What if we really started to work together? Yes, we have differences in things. What if we would have started to work together? What if your movement and my movement came together? What a powerful transformative experience that would have on this country. One, the king was killed at 39 years old. Right? Don't let them come together. Don't let them get together. Don't let them get organized. Don't let them connect the dots. Right? Keep focusing on the difference, keeping them separated, individuals and small groups and this, that and the other. Because individuals and small groups will never change history in the larger sense. Look at like the real transformative movements in history, I studied history. History, a lot of different countries and et cetera. So you need groups of large groups of people. America's going to change. And I'm going to close it to this comment. On April 9, 1968, on the cap of the University of South Florida, I spoke on a program with the name of Dr. Adrian Law. I have the speech that I gave, April 9, 1968, Memorial to Dr. King. And we said, we're going to change America because we will not accept America as it is. And we set out as a group of people and there are changes that are in place that have endured as a result of. We am saying to you, I'm saying to you, those of you here, and our leader, glad to recall the group of Tampa Bay area is the Green, Pastor Lewis Group. You understand, it's new, it's sacrifice. We can work together and change things. But we have to have hope, yes. You have to have faith, yes. You have to have vision because without vision, people perish. And you have to have a plan that people understand and are freedom. Otherwise, you're not working on the same thing in the direction for the same causes. We need plans, just like you did with some of the projects that you talked about. You have to have plans, current plans to accomplish those things. So I'm going to sit down. I'm going to turn it back over and let you close it out. If you close it out, I think someone wanted to make a comment, but you welcomed us up. So I'm going to ask, as whoever wants to do it, then I'm going to sit. Thank you so much, God bless you. Thank you for coming.
So I did, I agree with the mom that we are not holding anyone in any respect that we have on overtime. However, this is also a cherished moment that we have so many incredible living legacies in our room. And Mr. Warren Dawson would like to say something, so I'd like to create that space.
Thank you very much. We had a history to occur about three days ago in this country. The past president who had done everything in the world, finally, finally, made him responsible, found him guilty of 34 counts. Fellas, made him to, for the first time in all of his time, to file the account. And we will celebrate that situation for years to come. Finally, God, him guilty as he well deserved. Well, we came here today to celebrate the Brown decision. Brown versus the School Board to pick the Kansas. And as Remba said, and it's related cases. Brown versus the School Board did a lot to desegregate the area. And as I said, we're here today to celebrate. It really was a book. It had three or four related cases and it's positive was many cases. A chapter in that book that was Brown versus the Board of Education was the case of Manning versus the School Board of Hillsborough County. We're here to celebrate Brown, but we really should also recognize our contribution to and our involvement with Manning versus the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida. I imagine Hillsborough County, Florida was one of the larger school districts descended by Manning, I mean by Brown in that the school, the school system in Hillsborough County, Florida was at least one time the ninth largest school district in America. And so now we have, as I said earlier, the history of this region. Alvin Bragg. Does anybody know that person? Who is Alvin Bragg? It was his case that brought about that victory against past president. The case of Manning versus the School Board, which desegregated the public schools in Hillsborough County, Florida, was my case. As was the case with Alvin Bragg. And the case of Donald Trump versus the people of New York. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dawson. Mr. Warren Dawson and Mr. Delap Stewart, two incredible legal giants of our community. Thank you so much for being here this evening. There it is. And that's for upcoming, our association about a decade ago created a documentary called Before the Law Was Equal. It was a part of a small group of young lawyers that worked on that. Mr. Dawson and Mr. Stewart told their stories as part of that documentary, which talked about the desegregation of the legal community here in Hillsborough County. It is accessible, I believe, on YouTube and it's called Before the Law Was Equal. You can learn about Mr. Stewart, you can learn about Mr. Dawson and several other legal giants who are depicted in there. So we had an incredible opportunity to create that film. Thank you, Mr. Dawson, for being a part of it. With that, I want to conclude our evening. I want to say thank you so much for being a part of this evening. Thank you for holding out with us as we ran a little long. There's probably a calling question in the back of your mind on what's next. And I'm excited to share actually that Ms. Chloe, Fred, myself, our folks at the Tampa Bay Times, Newspapers and Education are having a meeting tomorrow to talk about what is next because we realized not only by the length of this program tonight, but in the preparations of it, there's so many stories and a need for us to have conversations like this. So we are going to use this as a catalyst for talking about bringing more programs like this to the Tampa Bay area. Thank you so much for being here and we hope that you all have a wonderful night.